Seven ten, all those being ordered, joining the pledge leaving.
To comply with the United States of America and the true republic for which to stand, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any additions or directions to the agenda this evening?
Yes. Underneath recommended action, new business, consider approval of offering, this will be letter F, consider approval of offering teaching contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The recommendation is to approve offering a contract to Eric Hanson as a math teacher at Tornton High School and to Peter Grunani as a math teacher at Southeast Junior High School for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year that you wanted certification.
Here, we now need to adopt the agenda without addendum, do I have a motion? Seven. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented this evening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Uh, next thing is letter C, our annual budget for amended fiscal year twenty-four budget. So, if I'll allow over here.
Senator Francisco Horn, I did leave a attachment to each of your place all three. The emergency budget, your packets are coming seventy-nine. And I would ask if you would replace page ninety with the single page for one of these that I provided in front. If you just leave them on shared. The emergency budget is actually very small this year. General fund has three different accounts that need adjusted. Two are getting decreased, one increased for net zero dollar amount. When we get into our audit, it's necessary that each of our three categories, instruction, instructional report, and general report. Um, so we look at each of the accounts in those different categories in total. And to let the other budget, which is a change of seven. So a general fund is the net zero. Food service, I'm asking that we increase the expenditures to the fresh fruit vegetable by forty-five dollars. And then the policies identify their own identity. So it's not, there is a doubt. But is there any questions now, or is it become to that?
So move down is a public comment. Do you want to provide your opinion? Okay. We're done, we will close the budgeting for amended fiscal year twenty-four budget. Uh, letter D, information and proposals, we don't have anything this evening. Letter D is in this public forum. We don't have any control issues in front of me. So, yes, we will move down to letter F, recommended actions. Number one is the consent agenda. Are there any items on consent agenda this evening that you can go provision support? Okay. All those in favor of approving consent agenda is presented this evening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bye. All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Number two, old business. Letter A, consider approval of proposed revisions to district policy forty-one forty. Certified and professional staff, current benefits. The recommendation is to approve the revisions to district policy forty-one forty was presented on the second final reading. Do I have a motion? Seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving proposed revisions to district policy forty-one forty, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Letter B, consider approval of proposed revisions to district policy forty-one fifty. Certified and professional staff, leaves and absences. The recommendation is to approve the revisions to district policy forty-one fifty is presented on the second and final reading. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving revisions to district policy forty-one fifty, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Letter C, consider approval of proposed revisions to district policy forty-two thirty, classified fringe benefits. The recommendation is to approve the revisions to district policy forty-two thirty is presented on second final reading. Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
May I ask just one quick question? Well. Um, Mr. Kramer, can you explain how this is different or what's being changed? In this particular policy, because this is where we talk a lot of numbers about PTO and benefits.
I actually have Holly, if you want to speak to that. I have been watching some of the suggestion changes that you've made to the notes, you need to see to those.
It's going coming. Um, so twenty-three, the board approved, um, from salary relation. The cap, uh, expecting five, we go through both certified and classified. Um, as well as changing the other data to number three. Uh, others that are the active buyers. The, the process from the salary relation key was heavily among the faculty. Uh, employee, um, sort of type of home now, boss support. So he's changed just with what the, um, the item before improved on value. Thank you. You're welcome.
You have a piece to that, if I may, just gotta go into a little bit more detail on those, just to revisit that. Uh, was to before the PTO was able to be held for a hundred days, but it was reduced to seventy-five. But there was a significant increase in the percentage of reimbursement for those, which made a significant difference. Also, the way the wording was, it was really only carrying over eighty-nine days per staff because the, well, actually it's eighty-eight. Eighty-eight days per staff because when the time was being counted was on July one and after they had been given the PTO for that next school year. And so now it is at seventy-five, it actually, when they get their twelve, it actually gets up to eighty-seven. And then with the increase. And so the days is really, there's only one day that actually is not perfectly aligned there. And we've actually increased the value of those days for employees to be reimbursed and, uh, hold on to those.
I think you're on the left.
So was it? I didn't have any, not incorrect.
Well, okay, they start with seventy-five days. They're allowed eleven, so they would start the year, they would max out at seventy-five. And they now keep the eleven days to be.
Thank you.
And as well as, um, classified staff, there, um, the max they give is the latest. So there is a reduction to thirty-five and it increases to four.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving provisions to district policy forty-two thirty, classified benefits, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Letter E, center approval of proposed revisions to district policy forty-two forty, classified staff, leads and absences. The recommendation is to approve their provisions to district policy forty-two forty is presented on second final reading. Do I have a motion? Seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving provisions to district policy forty-two forty, classified staff, leaves and absences, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Letter E, consider approval of proposed revisions to district policy forty-three thirty, medical leave bank. The recommendation is to approve the proposed revisions to district policy forty-three thirty, present on second final reading. Do I have a motion?
So move.
There's a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving amendments to district policy forty-three thirty, medical leave bank, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Letter F, consider approval of proposed revisions to district policy forty-three oh one, special education endorsement agreement. The recommendation is to approve the revisions to district policy forty-three oh one to be renumbered to forty-one seventy-five and is presented on second final reading. Do I have a motion? Seven. There's a second.
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor of approving revisions to district policy forty-three oh one, special education endorsement agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Letter G, consider approval of proposed new district policy forty-two seventy-five, special education, special assistance review agreement. The recommendation is to approve the new proposed district policy forty-two seventy-five is presented on second final reading. Do I have a motion? Seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new district policy forty-two seventy-five, special education, special assistance, certificate agreement, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Letter H, consider approval of proposed revisions to policy fifty-one thirty-one from student conduct. Incise activity rules are at six thirty-two. The recommendation is to approve the proposed provisions to district policy fifty-one thirty-one point two-two as presented on second final reading. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving revisions to district policy fifty-one thirty-one point two-two, student conduct, incised activity rules for sixty-three twelve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Letter I, consider approval of proposed new district policy twelve hundred, parental rights. The recommendation is to approve the proposed new district policy four hundred is presented on the second final reading. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new district policy twelve hundred parental rights, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Letter J, consider approval of proposed revisions to district policy ninety-three seventy-one, board hearings, appeal procedures, uh, rules of practice, governing hearings in contested cases before the board trustees. The recommendation is to approve, approve the proposed revisions to district policy ninety-three seventy-one is presented on second final reading. Do I have a motion? Seven. Is there a second? Any discussion?
I would just note that the last two, this one and the prior, are being changed for so much of changes in state statute. Correct, Mr. Kramer?
That's correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving provisions to district policy ninety-three seventy-one, board hearings, appeal procedures, rules of practice, governing hearings, in contested cases before the board trustees, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Number three, new business. Letter A, consider approval of amended fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four district budget. The recommendation is to approve the amended fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four budget as presented. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the amended fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four district budget as presented this evening, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Letter B, consider approval of contracting for the twenty-four, twenty-five staff professional development services. The recommendation is to approve contracting with Institute for Multisensory Education, IMSE, for thirty-eight days of in-district professional development coaching and support for special education teachers and intervention teachers for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And the total amount is a hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars, this is funded through. Okay. Okay. Sorry about that. I think I put it wrong. But B, consider approval of special education contract for student placement services. The recommendation is to approve contracting with Lake Harry Center Incorporated for student residential placement, education services, and extended school year education services from July ninth, twenty twenty-four, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, the total amount of four hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. This is funded through a general fund for school special education. Do I have a motion?
I would move that we approve the contract for special services with the revision to the contract on page six of seven, that it be Wyoming applicable law to the agreement as opposed to Kansas.
The one question I have is all services are going to be rendered in Kansas.
Explain that.
Just do, that's where the student placement is.
Go.
Business, that's where, other than their home being here and it being paid with Wyoming funds, all services will be rendered in the state of Kansas.
Hmm, I didn't realize that. Okay, I withdraw that motion then, because we wouldn't have a leg to stand on then.
That's what I wondered, because when I was looking at that and trying to dissect that while you were talking.
Realized the student went to Kansas.
Because they will reside one hundred percent of the time in Kansas.
Yeah. Yeah, then they would need to stay in Kansas far. Yeah. So I'll renew my motion to approve the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Kramer, uh, could we just get a better understanding on the amount of money? It's, it's like ten times what former.
Yeah, and it really reflects on the needs of the individual, um, and the types of services that will be received. Um, when we get into one of these situations where we have a very high need, a very specific need and potential, um, here of that student resulting in specialized employees that are having to work with that student and there, when there is the potential for, um, a lot of physical interaction that could take place. Um, we do not have those services in the state of Wyoming. We don't have those services in the district. And so unfortunately, we are tied to those entities that can take a student without his high needs and therefore reflective of very high cost uh, because of the type of care that is required for that individual student. Um, so it is challenging, it is significant, uh, but it is reflective of the significant needs of that student also.
I, I would also add, um, with this type of place, or when it is the special end of nature, it is reimbursable. So it's one of those expenditures that, that we incur through fiscal year twenty-five. We're going to see the funds in fiscal year twenty-six. So it, it does come back to the district. Unfortunately, it has become a situation where we, we have to use cash reserves upfront to, to make the expenditure and then the turnaround and bunch the cash reserves.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving, uh, special education contract for student placement services uh, from July ninth, twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-five, in the total amount of four hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Letter C, consider approval of district gate admission crisis for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The recommendation is to approve maintaining gate admission crisis for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at the rate of five dollars per person, excluding district students and employees, twenty-five dollars per year for annual admission pass per district policy, uh, thirty-six fifty-one point one gate receipts and admissions. Do I have a motion? Seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Marcy, how much does the district make off of these? Just ballpark.
We have. We brought you to thirty thousand for fiscal year twenty-four and we're ending the year at thirty-four thousand. So that's substantial amount of money. Talked about it in the past, you mean? Does it make sense to have gate receipts and usually comes back to the fact that we're so close to Nebraska and they charge us to, to go over there and then.
Just do as you want. Yeah. Where do the monies go that are collected from gate fees?
What, um, what we'd like to think about are two different things. Um, gate receipts help, um, cover the cost of our drug testing. And, um, they also are used for officials and culminating travel. So if it is used in, yeah, for the, um, activities side.
Thank you. Any others? All those in favor of approving, approval of district gate admission crisis for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any extensions?
I would strongly encourage the twenty-five dollar per year annual is a very, very affordable pass for our local individuals who'd like to attend. So that is much easier than the five dollar ticket. So I'm sorry to interrupt on that, but I always like to point that out.
Okay, letter D. Consider approvals contracting for the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five staff professional development services. The recommendation is to approve contracting with Institute of Multi-Sensory Education, IMSE, for thirty-eight days of in-district professional development coaching and support for special education teachers and intervention teachers for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the total amount of a hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars. This is funded through the best fund. Do I have a motion? Seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Will the coaching and support with IMSE continue if one of the other best funds are finished?
So there will be still opportunities for training and we will still be maintaining so that we will not be able to maintain at the level of thirty-eight days per year. Uh, that is much more, uh, than what we'll be able to maintain with the current budget. Uh, but we will be able to have the in-district coach that we still have and we will maintain that along with, um, the other trainings that we provided for our coaches and things that will be much more probably internally based. Um, and we'll still utilize some of the federal funds, uh, to pay for some of those days. Uh, but the idea is that this was at a sliding scale of making sure the administrators were on, on top of this, having their training and being able to guide away from within that, uh, no, but also.
Thank you, would that also follow the holders?
Correct, yes, and that's where some of that will be coming from. It will still be able to quantify the thirty-eight days, um, because we utilize a lot of literacy grants to support the coaching aspect of those internal coaches. But that kind of isn't a recommendation because the internal coach is also a part of killing and training with I M S.
Who are the I M S E coaching services made available to?
I'm actually getting a little bit more specific and a little more information on that.
This, this round of coaching was largely set up with Trina, the special ed director. We're really trying to focus on tier two and tier three interventions and making sure that what we're doing in the day-to-day, like everyday classroom for all kids is also transferring into the tier two and tier three interventions. That's why that's where the way that it is. With some of our spent title teachers and other interventionists that we have to, to truly try and ramp that up and align all of our curriculums as well as like, I wish Trina was here to speak for this, but having, having knowledge of some of those conversations. She wanted some of these coaches to help, uh, with some curricular resources around some of our non-verbal kids at the lower elementary, so they're going to be doing a lot of that kind of work as well.
Thank you.
In previous years, primarily that has been focused on the K through five, K through six, uh, area for the coaching. This one that has been a major focus.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of improving contracting for the twenty-four, twenty-five staff professional development services through I M S E for thirty-eight days, in the district professional development coaching uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the total amount of a hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Letter E, consider approval of purchase of I M S E courses and digital curriculum materials. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of fifty I M S E interactive O G software license renewals for K five and special education staff from I M S E in the amount of fifty-three hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. This is funded through S R funds, do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Good.
Any discussion?
Is this an annual renewal?
Yes, this would be an annual renewal, that's correct.
So we just work that in every year right now.
With that, we can make that work pretty easily.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the purchase of I M S E courses and digital curriculum materials in the total amount of five thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. Letter F, consider approval of offering teaching contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The recommendation is to approve offering a contract with Eric Hanson as a math teacher at Tornton High School and to Peter Grunani as a math teacher at Southeast Junior and Senior High School for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year pending Wyoming certification. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of offering teaching contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year to Eric Hanson and Peter Grunani, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I don't care. I don't care. Letter D, topics for instruction, this is time for board members to see both bringing each other on kindly talks.
Real quick, I just want to actually. Quick, I want to extend uh my appreciate or our appreciation for those administrators that were that came to the meeting last night. Um and those that are here tonight, um we appreciate your time to come in and and uh. Again, I I enjoyed the discussion, so thank you.
I had a quick question just for us four members regarding that. Um mission version work. Um I I guess I kind of wanted to hear from you guys as. As a whole, uh. Are we wanting to make it a priority to get? The majority of that work done? Before the November election, um or. Or not, I guess that would, I think it's just some of it's time consuming. And we've spent a whole lot of work so far getting to this point. I was was curious on your guys thought that that's a priority? Or we kind of just get it started and and wait to see if we have it going. My thought, we we've done so much work as it is, I I would say. I don't want to just get, you know, into start of the school year and then stuff comes up and we we kick the can down the road and we don't get. Don't finish really what we've started, but I guess I'd like for us, if if that's what we want to do, set some specific dates. If it is a goal to get it done.
On the, I would I would agree with you, I think we spend a lot of time. Fair amount of resources on it, so I think it's worth it.
I would also like to see it get done and completed, we've put a lot of time and thought into this and. Um last night's discussion was fantastic with the staff and administrators and so forth, I think that. We're getting really close, although it doesn't feel like it at times, especially like the meetings uh like last night, but I think we're getting really close. Um I think too that the hope or my personal hope is that um. Many of the board members whose whose terms are up will run again and will have some continuity for this board. Um so that we can continue to pursue the vision and the mission that we've been working on.
Is it feasible to have it completed by this week?
Yes.
I think the mission and vision component, yes.
What requires you to do that?
That is, yeah, well, I is in specific measurements, I think, and then also the tail more discussion as we spoke about last night. That that's not just a board discussion piece, you know, that that. The 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 conversation that I have is the mission visions, it's important. Where those other aspects need a lot more input from from staff. From creation, all of those pieces to put into place. Um I did send you an update of some of the discussion uh from last night, which kind of refined some of those things. Uh and and I think, I think it's certainly manageable to to have a vision and mission established where and be able to. To receive feedback by that time. I think the the challenge that the challenge that we have is I know there's a number of things probably coming up at the end of July here for many and. At the beginning of August, as you have fair, where we probably are not meeting again until. We have that first week in August, uh the thirteenth is our board meeting and so. You know, you're you're talking, if you you have, if you schedule one meeting possibly before the board meeting, um. Depending upon the availability of everybody and then one afterwards, you could probably have that completed. I'm guessing one meeting and I would put there as two just in case.
What do you think a feasible timer would look like with the core values?
Yeah, no, I think I I think that's reasonable.
I think it would help to have solid.
Hmm, I don't disagree.
And who participates in the conversation about the core values?
What I would probably envision is the administrators and leadership teams. Be part of that.
Well, that also been a section of the survey that will go out.
We can do that in conjunction to get this, especially on the mission and vision piece. Um the core values piece is going to be very reflective of, well, what we talked about last night. Trimming that down to where there are not the eleven uh. Groups of sentences, but actually just. Find points to really go through and review and find to where that, where the measurement tools come into play.
What is the temperature of this board and doing um one, if not two of those meetings via Zoom if people are not able to physically be here? Um to me, it's more of a priority for us to get it done. And to, you know, we know each other now, I don't know that an in-person meeting is as important as it would be if it was a group that had worked together. Um but I personally would like to see it made a priority so we can get it done. And I think that if we're given the opportunity to do it via Zoom or what have you, it might make it a little bit more feasible.
So do you, you envision um having the option to Zoom and or come in person?
Yeah.
Yeah, just mainly for the the vision and mission piece so that we can get that done. And then kick the survey out to the community and the administrators and their their leadership.
Okay, so two two means, right? And print those barrels. Okay. So we have a meeting on the seventeenth.
But we'll work session in conjunction with our. I know that's spelled wrong, maybe that's not comparable, but it's one less challenge definitely.
Yeah, I'm I'm glad, that's all I know.
Do we want? Another one before that or?
Well, that's just next week, right?
Would there be an interest, I I know there are some conflicts next week that you mentioned, but we could in conjunction with next week's meeting also. If we want to do that. Yeah, we can do it, if we, if there's interest in next, having that in conjunction with the. With the budget hearing, we can do that, budget hearing will probably be.
About half hour.
Yeah, it is about a half hour is what we said in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we we can do the work session before, yeah. We want to do it six.
Might be nice to have a cap on the work sessions so that we don't.
That sounds good, we do a six o'clock work session in conjunction with that next Wednesday on the seventeenth.
And you're okay with Zoom appearances, it's necessary.
Absolutely.
I'll be at district Facebook, but.
No, you're you're.
Awesome.
I know how it goes.
Awesome.
We'll avoid going on the cheering and the and the screaming and all those things as you're on Zoom.
Well, all games are during the day, so my evening's over there, there you go.
Hey, are there any other topics? Okay, letter E, you can use your meetings, there will be a special board meeting for the annual twenty four twenty five fiscal year budget hearing. Um and related budget items as well as a work session on Wednesday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Uh work session starts at six and the budget hearing starts at seven. Uh number two, the annual back to school in service for all district staff will be on Monday, August twelfth. Certified staff will be meeting in their buildings from seven forty five to eleven forty five with lunch provided. And due for all employees and families at TMS. All district staff will then be at the THS auditorium at one o'clock for the welcome back in service. Number three, the next regular board meeting will be on Tuesday, August thirteenth at seven P M. And number four, the board is invited to attend or drop in on professional development opportunities. On Aug- Tuesday, August thirteenth with Breeze Daniel for P L C training at THS. And Wednesday, August fourteenth for Franklin heavy seven habits of highly effective people training at three locations. Um.
Last was time and locations. Yep.
And number five, the annual W S B A regional meeting will be hosted by Commerce County School this period on Tuesday, August twenty seventh, and Nicholas. With that and. Letter I, some of them.
Just two things that actually on the future meetings are just one really in particular about August twenty seventh. Uh if you have an interest in attending, I do attend that uh yearly and so if you want to participate, just let me know. Uh typically it's a good meeting and good training and uh good information, especially on the state budget. And how that reflects the future of us like session, so if you have an interest in that, please just let me know and we can get you set up for that um attendance. Uh the second one is I did forward you a message from Chief Johnson uh this morning. Uh talking about their training that will take place on July twenty third and twenty fourth. Uh the active threat training and they're going to be doing that at Eastern Wyoming College this year. Um and you are invited as board members uh to attend and uh take part in that if you if you would like. Uh feel free to let them know or let me know if you have any questions and I can point in the right direction. Um they have done that at our buildings the last two years, uh TMS and THS. So they wanted to also move into a a second uh third building uh being E W C. Um the only item is we discussed the. The strategic planning, the only other item that I had to share was just an update on our hiring. And where we're at with that. And we have made some significant strides in filling the number of positions. Uh that we have, we still do have uh the school psych position, speech language pathologist position. Uh we did have two that were filled this evening, the special education uh and the halftime T S P E. And the, we do have, we did have a fill of the transfer from the THS counselor. Uh we are still looking for a real special education teacher and a halftime interventionist academic advisor for TMS. Um and we do have a number of uh non-certified positions that we have opened. Uh and they have been receiving applications as I've been receiving notifications for those. But we are in a a very good position right now in regards to filling our positions and uh. Continued network with the human resource department, Holly and her work on on recruiting staff for the next school year. And that is everything, right?
Mister Chair, if I may, um I I guess I can just want to actually follow up with um somewhat of the topic, but I was waiting for this. This um strategic topic also with the superintendent's report, um. Can I just get again clarification? I I thought we were sitting pretty well with the vision statement. And we did get through some of the mission statement, so just clarification and what it is that we're going to be doing at this next meeting. Plus the one in August.
I think I want to revisit next week, just to make sure. That we're okay with that language on the vision and mission, uh because I know there was suggestion changes. But I also want to make sure that that got out to those board members who were not able to. Take part in last night's discussion, just to make sure we didn't miss any word or make any changes, that would have some dramatic effect. I think an hour will be more than enough time next week and if we're there on the mission and vision, there might not maybe the necessity to have. Uh further discussion on that August meeting. Is my hope, so I think we did have some fine tuning of it, I don't know because when we did move past that vision piece, there still was. Some some questions on there, at least I felt if there were none and and we get to the point on next Wednesday and you've had an opportunity to review that. And you're feeling really good about that, then it will not take a significant amount of time. At least in my assessment.
Well, I gue- I guess my my thought is just, you know, um. If if we're at a place where, you know, going with Dylan's points or Chairman Hager's point about. Being able to get this done soon, um. You know, I want I want our our meetings on this to be as as productive and. Efficient as possible, and and I guess the thing is is is, you know, um. I I like the the point of about being able to do it Zoom so that those that can. They can't be here in person, we can get it to have everybody's input, right? So again, we don't have to extend the meetings to be able to 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 finish this up, um but I guess. I do ask for you guys' temperature, how many um of our? Opinions are we going to wait on before we say, okay, let's move? Um because I'm not sure. I I I think everybody's gone through, you know, sat through some of these meetings, but we may not get a hundred percent. Hundred percent opinions on on it, so where are we going to say, okay, we got the majority, so let's move with this.
Well, I think one in those cases too comes down to consent, you know, where you're saying it's not perfect, there are some words that I. I have questions about, but I can support. I I don't, the questions are inhibiting me to supporting the mission and vision that we're moving forward collectively. That's the key on on that consensus piece. Uh very similarly to what we've done with side relations and how you move forward with that language, because sometimes those language pieces are. Inhibited of some things, but you can support the overall feeling and what and why your values are reflected in that mission and vision.
Good.
And regardless, this is a draft, and so we give that information to the community and get that.
Exactly, so.
Yep.
Could we potentially as a board decide that we're okay with the shooting, we should see it tonight where it sits and start moving. Towards the core values.
I don't have a problem with that. If everybody's felt like they've had an opportunity to view it from where it was, I'm going to bring it up here.
I am comfortable with where that sits as a draft here.
For the both, the the vision and the mission?
I am as well after the time we spent last night discussing it.
I would agree.
And keep in mind, our meeting last night was again with staff and administrators and so forth, so it wasn't just the board, but. It felt like we made a lot of headway.
I think. I can agree with you.
I can certainly put it out there for feedback as soon as we can, I'm happy to do that, we want to move in that direction.
I definitely, I think that's the one to discuss first, which I remember starting some monster thoughts, I need your back from everybody else.
Yeah, you put that out there.
I'm with Carlos, like I feel like we just keep kicking this down the road, we gotta.
Nope, sounds good, I'll start that process tomorrow and getting that up.
So the question would be then.
Probably need a little bit more time then in between sending that out to get that that feedback back, so where next week is probably.
Too tight.
Not going to be conducive to making changes just on that one.
Okay, so. Don't come in six next week.
Do not come in six, and and don't, you'll need to zoom in for that one on six o'clock.
But come at the August meeting, would we be ready to have the core values discussion?
I think so, if we have feedback by then, I think, well, we'd want, we'd be discussing the actual feedback. At that time on the mission and vision. And the mission to core values.
I definitely don't want to see for administrators, but actually many of them have come to board meetings anyway, so it might be beneficial for them to not have that permission, maybe they just come. Or maybe so.
They are always up for not having to.
Did you say in addition to the core values, so we would?
I think I think we could have, I think we have that to skip, well, being that it's. Being that's on top of the regular meeting in August, I don't know, we might just have the discussion in August. On the feedback on the mission and vision at that time. And I'm just thinking that that's that's probably given. And I'm just thinking that that's that's probably given, we're going to want to refine that piece. Because we're going to have a good amount of feedback by that time. That's four weeks away.
And then we would have to schedule another work session with the leadership to.
But there would be some work already being done on that piece with the core values. So they can have suggestions and ideas centered around that.
This is probably clear after I'll say, but I'm really ready to get to this. Back those start down like thinking about it's like pushing this.
After.